Yeah.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the Sunnyside City Council regular meeting for today, Monday, October the ninth, two thousand twenty-three. For the record, all members of council are present either in person or on Zoom as well as staff. We've got two staff individuals who are on vacation. All right, do we have somebody here for an invocation this evening? All right, I ask that you please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join your hearts with mine. Oh, God, we come before you first with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. You don't leave us or forsake us, and your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will continue to lead us here. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person that we meet, every citizen of this city, as is in every city, in your own image, with dignity and worth. We thank you for the calling you have given each of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves, and we pray, God, that you would make that real here in this town. We thank you tonight, God, for these, your servants, our mayor, our city mayor, our city staff, our councilmen members. We give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here, and we come to this room tonight, Lord, as complex human beings, carrying our burdens, our joys, our hopes, trusting that you alone can hold us together in your love and peace. Help us to trust you more, that we can leave our fears and our pride and our burdens at the door, and lead this city in accordance to your will and not merely our own. And so we pray, God, that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. We pray that you would have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom would come here in Sunnyside, as it is in heaven, through your power, working in each of these, your servants. May your truth be revealed and your light shine brighter. Let the voices of those be heard loud and clear. Defend their cause, God, through this governing body tonight. We pray for wisdom and strength, the courage to do what is right and good for all of the citizens of Sunnyside. We pray that we would put the interests of others above our own selfish interests, that we act with love for the good of everyone, that we can be those good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. We thank you again, Lord, for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, hospital staff, and all who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful and glorious city, and we pray, God, for your wisdom in leading it. In the name of our Lord, whose perfect love sets us free from our fears. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in Thank you. You may be seated. There are a number of things that are extremely enjoyable for me as mayor, and tonight we're going to start out with one of those. I'm going to ask our outgoing Miss Sunnyside Court to come forward at this time, and I'm going to present them with their mayor's coins. And while they're coming up, I want to say that I've had the privilege of encountering these young ladies many times throughout the year and have been impressed with their attitude, with their service. I don't care if it's hot or cold or windy or what. Come on up. And they've always had a smile on their face and a great attitude, so. Ladies, in recognition for your excellent services past year and making Sunnyside look fantastic because of your attitude, I'd like to give you these coins to commemorate your year in service, but also to express our appreciation as a city and city staff for your service. You guys did an excellent job. You made us all proud. Next, I'm going to call our upcoming court, the one who has just been elected. If you please come forward. All right. So now you have the opportunity, and you're stepping into some big shoes, but I have confidence because I had the opportunity to meet a lot of Miss Sunnyside Courts and have been impressed almost every single time. You guys have a great year ahead of you, and I think you're going to do well. So who is Miss Lila Rice? Is that you? All right. So we're going to present a city pin as representatives of Sunnyside. So here's your pin. And then Maya Morales.
Thank you.
Princess Ruby Morales Martinez. And you must be Eve Garcia or Eddie Garcia. Eve Garcia, there you are. All right. Well, congratulations on winning. My wife was one of the ones who counted the votes. She was present and said you guys all knocked it out of the court. You did an excellent job. So I have great hopes for you guys. There's somebody signing. If we give you guys a chance to step out, I'm going to grab the sign up sheet over here. So we had two sign up sheets this evening. One was for the public comment, and we'll be going through that first. And then during the time of the public hearing, we will see nobody signed up for that. So. All right, public comment. Citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to counsel to three minutes. Counsel may refer items to staff to review and or research for presentation at a future council meeting. Please keep in mind, we don't necessarily comment, or typically, we don't comment on what is presented on that evening. We like to take some time to research and come up with the appropriate answer. So.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we suspend the rules for the time tonight.
I object, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, we have a second and an objection. Let me make a note of this. Mr. Rusucci, your objection.
I object to suspending the rules, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to council's procedure, you must call for a vote.
We do have a motion and a second, sir. So that's what we will do. Mr. Hicks, you look like you were going to say something. Am I?
I was gonna suggest we move it to five minutes versus three.
Already a motion on the floor.
We already have the motion on the floor, so the five minutes. So it's right now at this point, the motion is either to suspend the rules, the rule being three minute presentation or allow open ended. Is there further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I think we can only vote on one thing.
This is correct. That's what we're going to do. The motion right now stands to either suspend the rules or to keep it at the three minutes. So a yes vote will be to suspend the rules, and no vote will be to keep it at three minutes. All right. All right. All in favor of opening it up and suspending the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
A two vote no. Motion fails. And I will explain why I voted no. We've heard a great deal over the last couple of weeks that we've been working on. The last time we spent over an hour, and unfortunately, there were people who said what they were going to say and then turned around and repeated it. And it got to be extremely long. And the downside of that is, we as council then had a public hearing immediately afterwards, and we were not on our game. However, I will say that I would encourage you to stay the meeting after public comments. I don't think it's going to be terribly long, and you may talk with us individually, and we will be happy to hear what you have to say.
Mr. Mayor, I move to allow the comment to five minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the commenting to five minutes. Discussion on this item. All right, all in favor of changing the time to five minutes from three minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I also vote aye. We will move the timer to five minutes. Thank you. All right. First name on my list is Mr. Tom Dolan.
My name is Tom Dolan. I live here in Sunnyside, and I practiced for three minutes for quite some time. So just now I don't know what I'm gonna do for two more minutes.
We have confidence in you, sir.
I'd like to pass these out.
Mr. Sanchez, could you?
And, 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 Mr. Sanchez. Around those. They're not stable. There we go. So my, for my five minutes, I wanted to talk about the confusion there is on whether or not we have enterprise funds. And I found out that we actually do have some enterprise funds. Some people call them restricted funds. Ken and I talked a long time ago, seems like a long time ago, December or something, about enterprise funds and what was going on with them. Then I ran into this guy, Ron Stremler, and he had a whole bunch to say about enterprise funds. And I'm still, I'm still trying to find out exactly what those are all about. But what I did find out was enterprise funds can be used in other places, but you have to have a contract to do it, and you have to arrange for interest to be paid on the money borrowed. And then there's a timeframe when asked me to put back in there, buy. And so I was curious if this, this time around during December somewhere, wherever this happened, I haven't gotten quite to that point yet to find out. But I wondered if it was all set up like that and that there was interest paid back and what happens to that. So anyway, I wanted to read a little bit of this to you. Ron said, a few days later, I was in Sunnyside and stopped at the firehouse. I went into one of the fire department bays, and Chief Anderson was there. He said, I have something to show you. Took me to his office and took sheets, two sheets of paper off his desk and handed them to me. I didn't look at the exact date, but one was dated later, late December twenty twenty-two, the other early January twenty twenty-three. The December paper showed an ambulance fund enterprise fund had about three point five plus million dollars. The paper in January showed a balance of around zero. So that's some serious interest, I believe. Chief Anderson told me at this time that at some point earlier in Public Works Director had come to him and told him, Chief Anderson, he better check his ambulance fund, his enterprise fund, because his Public Works Director, street, water, and sewer enterprise funds had disappeared. The above statement of Chief Anderson and the Finance Director occurred after Chief Anderson's talk with the Public Works Director. About the middle of February, Chief Anderson called me to advise that he had been placed on paid administrative leave. He told me also when that happened. On March second, twenty twenty-three, I decided that Mayor Borisma should know that City Hall had taken the enterprise funds out of the budget printout that I had seen. The mayor didn't answer when I called, but returned by call a few minutes, in a few minutes. Okay, so that was from Ron Stremler. Mine, I am a concerned citizen of Sunnyside, asking about the response from Mayor Dean Borisma. I had asked to meet the mayor about some things I had questions about. We had a coffee at Holy Pie's in recent past weeks when I asked about restrictive funds, also known as enterprise funds. Mayor said that there are no enterprise funds. I found out later, he had said the same thing to Mr. Stremler, who was on city council at the time. My question is, why would he say that? So the bottom is an explanation of what enterprise funds are that I've been able to, with a little help, dig up and find out exactly what's going on with those. We do have a, we do have a flash drive, and I've seen it pulled up on the screen, what exactly happened. You know, you go from this line to this line, this line. It's incredible to zero. So I thought I'd share that with you. I would like my city council to vote on a, not only a civic, but a forensic audit very soon. Thank you.
Just one comment, Mr. Dolan. If I led you or anyone else to believe that there was no enterprise funds, I certainly one hundred percent apologize. I cannot understand why I would have said or even let it be understood that there are no enterprise funds. So I apologize for that if that's, if that's how it came out.
You said there are no enterprise funds, and I don't know where you heard that. Later in our conversation, while I was eating my lunch and you were drinking your coffee, you said, well, there's, yeah, there's funds there, but they have to be a certain way in a certain, you know, so by the time we finished talking, you exactly, you had admitted to me that there are enterprise funds, when I knew good and well that there are enterprise funds, because I sat there and looked at them on the computer and said, well, how does it go from three point five million to zero?
Well, no. And again, I apologize if I led anyone to believe you or Mr. Stremler or anyone else that there are no enterprise funds, because if I said that, then I misspoke myself, and I was wrong, and I should not have said that. But there are enterprise funds. And so not sure what the context, how that came out. But again, I apologize if that's, if that's how it sounded. I.
I appreciate that. I've been teaching for a long time, and now I'm the student.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would be happy to share my screen and show council and the audience present the beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-three for all funds of the city, including the ambulance fund and the other enterprise funds, which are water, sewer, garbage, and stormwater funds.
Council, any objection to that? Just want to go ahead and show your screen.
So this report here.
Can we enlarge that?
Okay, this is the, the annual report for fund year twenty twenty-two. So this first column, where I've highlighted a little bit of green here, that's our beginning fund balance for twenty twenty-two, and this is our ending fund balance for all city funds. So each one of these individual rows is for a separate fund. Our enterprise funds are funds that start with a four hundred, and those begin here with our water fund, sewer fund and garbage fund. So you can see the ending fund balances for those are here at the bottom, one point four million, one point seven million, two hundred thousand for garbage. Our ambulance fund is fund four forty here. You can see the beginning fund balance is two point three million, and the ending fund balance is three point five million. I have also here, and I pulled this right out of bias just today, this is the report showing our beginning fund balance for fund year twenty twenty-three for ambulance fund, which is the same amount there as the other fund. I'm not sure why there is confusion about where the fund balances were. There are ways that you could pull a report where it doesn't show the beginning fund balance, but the beginning fund balance for all city funds haven't gone anywhere. They didn't go anywhere from December thirty-first through January first, not even for one second. They've all been exactly where they needed to be. There are transactions that we do in the system to adjust those numbers from time to time. So at the beginning of the year, when we haven't completely finalized fund year twenty twenty-two, and we're still making maybe corrections on a thing here or there, we may still make a small adjustment to some of these funds, but these funds have always been here. They've never gone anywhere else.
Thank you, Ms. Horner. So any other comments anybody has for Ms. Horner, please stay until the end of the meeting. She has indicated multiple times that she would be happy to sit down and open up her computer and show you all of that. So, Mr. Dolan, I know your hand is up, you want to speak, but I'm going to ask that you take the time after the meeting and address your question. And moving on, the next name on our list is Ken Knowles. Mr. Dolan, would you like the five minutes of Mr. Knowles?
What I, what I wanted to say was, I, like I said, we took a flash drive from Ken Anderson's computer, plugged it in and started scrolling through all the stuff, and sure enough, just like you said, they were gone. Line items were still there, but there was zero in, on his, and we have the flash drive, so I don't know where that thing came from. I've seen a couple of those too, but it's not, it doesn't look anything like that. So anyway, Monica's not here tonight. She's having some issues at home, and so.
I have to pick up your kinks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Alba.
So I think Jamison is trying to explain to you that when we start the beginning of the year, our budget reports will have a zero in the beginning fund balance until we figure out the ending fund balance. And that sometimes takes a month or two months. So what you see in a report at the beginning of the year will show zero at the beginning fund balance, but then it's put in with a one transaction later when we've actually balanced out the prior year.
Actually, what Ken Anderson said to me was that Jamison came into his office and said, you're gonna hate me. He said, what happened? He, she said, I had to use your money to make it to the end of the year. And that's, that's the story I got. So nobody believes Ken when he talks anyway, right? So.
Well, it's, it's an incorrect statement.
And just as long as I have a few minutes left, I, I might as well add that one of the main things that he was released on was that he wasn't doing training for his firefighters. Well, I have a letter, it's out in my truck, but I have a letter from Sheriff Udell, just praising the idea that you're going to build a fabulous training center out on Tucker Sellers' property, and that I met with Pat also about the, the Fire Chief from Grandview about what the benefits of that were. And he said that it would be fabulous to have that ladder truck parked out there to where both, it would raise the, the points on both firehouses, and it would help them cover their areas better, overlap. The overlap with Grandview and Sunnyside is a big thing. And then the discussion went to, how is it we have two firefighters, oh, paramedics, EMTs in Grandview, and they stopped paying us for those? I mean, to me, I, I thought, well, what's, how is that happening? We're paying for them to be in other places. Well, then he explained, well, yeah, they can be in these places and still work that out. To me, there's just too much, there's just too much. I'm seeing a lot of things that I don't believe, I don't trust, and I'm sorry, but until I can see it any other way. And these aren't somebody showing me this stuff. This is me finding it. So you asked for proof. Well, I think we have lots of that. So like I said again, I'd like my city council to consider voting for a forensic and a civil audit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think somebody on the Zoom has an open microphone. If you want to mute yourself, that would, if everybody makes sure they're muted, that'd be great. The next name on my list is Janice Walls. Okay, time surrendered to Britmore. Very good. Keep you track of that. All right. Okay, next name on my list is Sis Conard.
Hello there. I am here just to remind you that I'm having my open house at the museum on October nineteenth, Save the Museum. Okay, so again, I really invite the council to come and recognize the people that have been serving the Historical Association for some of them up to twenty years. And if you could just be there, we're going to be there from four. Well, it'll only, it'll only last till about five thirty. And I also extend that invitation to anyone out there that's listening to this, because we're still looking for volunteers that are willing to give eight hours a month to the, to Save the Museum and the history of Sunnyside. I also would like to comment on complimenting the council on recognizing the Sunnyside Court, which I think is just like the museum, another gym that makes Sunnyside very special. So thank you for that.
Just to clarify, that's Thursday the nineteenth. Okay, perfect. At four o'clock. I've got you on my calendar. All right. Next name on my list is Sharon Dolan.
Hello. I'm Sharon Dolan. I live in Sunnyside. I was on the Miss Sunnyside Court Board for about ten years. I've dealt with the LTAC Committee all that time, trying to get money to support the program. I feel that the Miss Sunnyside Court, they, on their float, they advertise all the major events in Sunnyside on the back of their float. That's on there. That's a requirement when the, the girls and their parents build that float. That float goes to the Spokane Parade, the Wenatchee Parade, the Seattle Parade, the Yakima Parade, and various other small communities in our valley. And I was very disheartened to see that they were, well, you're going to be talking about that tonight, but awarded only two thousand dollars. You can't do much for a float. The float needs repairs. It's very disheartening when it's a positive thing in our community. It's been around a long time, probably close to seventy some years, the program. And I, I was, and then I see that the Yakima Tourism, and I realize that they advertise for our community, but they are awarded fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars in the LTAC money. And I'm just wondering if, I've been researching it, and communities like Zilla pays the Yakima Tourism like five thousand dollars. Why is Sunnyside paying so much of our LTAC funds to Yakima Tourism? If you look on what the Yakima Tourism, they're, they're, what they bring in and what they're awarded, it was almost fifteen million dollars. Sunnyside is paying almost as much as Union Gap. And then I'm looking through these brochures, and there's not a lot, and I know it's other places. I know it's television. I know it's, you know, whatever, television, newspaper, whatever, there's pamphlets. But our museum was not mentioned one time in everything I've looked at in those advertisements. And we have a wonderful museum. So I just really think there needs to be some oversight in the LTAC money and what is awarded, because we need to promote our city in positive ways. And I don't know that giving, and I know there's people on that that have a lot of influence on that committee, but I really feel like maybe too much, because a lot of the, our LTAC money is going out of our town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And Mr. Farmer and the LTAC Committee will be reporting on that, or representing. Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Farmer and the LTAC Committee will be reporting on that or representing the LTAC Committee. We'll be reporting on that a little bit later and. Explaining how some of that went down. So. Next name on my list is Britton Moore.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Britton Moore, I live in here in Sunnyside. I've got a couple of handouts that I want to give you, but first I want to just, just read a few things. Back, I think somewhere in twenty twenty-two, the city manager asked fire department and police department to stop doing their own accounting in their departments. Some cities will do that, sometimes to streamline accounting, sometimes to, uh, cut back on payroll. The, the bad side of that is that these departments are not keeping track of what's going in and out and what they're spending. Um, it also gives the city the advantage to, to use those, those funds without those departments knowing it. I'd like to know why the city decided to do that. You have a letter there for Mr. Stremler. I urge you to read that in full tonight before you make any decisions. We have the zip drive that shows the three point two, three point five million there and then gone. Um, I appreciate Mrs. Horner's explanation, but I don't trust that. No one in this room trusts that. Nobody. And there's a lot of citizens that couldn't make it tonight that don't trust it either. Um, RCW seven four point seven oh, point oh three oh. Ambulance Transport Fund. Monies in the fund, including interest earned, shall not be used or dispersed for any purpose. Other than those specific in this chapter. RCW seventy-four point seven oh, point oh three oh. No, excuse me, I just read that one. Here it is, sorry. RCW three five point two one, point seven six six on the third page, which I have copies for all of you. Letter I. Revenues generated by the rates and charges must be deposited into a separate fund or funds and be used only for the purpose of paying. For the cost of regulating, maintaining and operating the ambulance utility. These funds are not to be touched. And to say that numbers here or there are different, we're talking about three plus million dollars. That does not just go away. It does not just be gone on a line item when everything else is there, but that fund is gone. I'm sorry. That doesn't hold water. I also want to clarify a forensic audit. I have here. For you exactly what a forensic audit is. Forensic audit can cost money. How it works is four people on council. Vote for a forensic audit. The mayor and the city manager do not have a say. We hire an outside firm to come in and do this forensic audit. It can be three to five hundred dollars an hour, or you can negotiate with a, with an accounting firm to do that on a different level. But we can't afford not to. We cannot afford not to. When we have so many unauthorized raises. Spending. Hiring. We've, we're, we're, we, we do not have the money that they say is in the account. It's just not there. So I need counsel tonight to really think hard about how this city is going to be run in the future. We need four votes from counsel. That's what we need. And believe me, none of us want to be here. Put the questions to rest. The city manager said, when this was first brought up, she was all for it. She had nothing to hide. Well, then let's do it. Prove us all wrong, please. I beg you. I would rather be wrong than right. We had our, uh, city attorney. By the direction of, of staff to give us a description of what a forensic audit was. A city doesn't do their own forensic audit. That's not how it works. So I have for you an explanation. And I have for you the other two RCWs for you to read up on. I'm asking for a forensic audit. We need this to be done. We need to clarify. All the fuzzy numbers because they are very fuzzy. I'll leave this with you.
Give them to Mr., Mr. Sanchez and the clerk will pick those up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, give them a chance to pass those out. And please understand that all the information we received this evening will be stuff that we will be studying later on. We don't have the opportunity to respond at this time. Um, I'm assuming you all want an intelligent response to your points, and so we do need to read what you have presented to us. All right, thank you. Next name on my list is Jim Stevens.
Uh, Jim Stevens, uh, Sunnyside, uh. Three twenty-eight Grandview Avenue. Uh. Couple items tonight. One, one item is dogs. Uh, we have a horrific problem in this community with dogs. Uh, they're running loose. They're stray dogs. You go on, what's up, Sunnyside? There's stray dogs, loose dogs, lost dogs all over the place. There's nobody picking them up. Uh, personal experience that, uh, I'll share again. Is, uh, my wife Rosalie was knocked down on her own property by a dog, broke three ribs and spent two days in the hospital. She's going out to the garbage. Her husband Jim wasn't very happy about it. Uh. We have dogs barking all night long up on our block. Chief has done a great job of going up there and doing what they can do. Uh, cited the people. For the first time, somebody actually cited him and he directed it to happen. But guess what? I just talked to Tom. It lives right up by him. He's eighty years old, eighty plus years old. I said, Tom, how's it going? We, uh, chief went up here, cited this guy, says, yeah, but they're still barking all night long, all night long. And he was emphatic about it. And I said, well, I'm gonna be at council tonight and the chief will know what's going on. These people are just simply, they don't respect the law. Probably didn't pay the fine either. So, uh. The person next door lives downstairs. She likes to go out running. Uh, she quit because of stray dogs chasing her. Today at our office, uh, I went out to just walk around our building and I had two pit bulls attack me on my own property. Or if it had been somebody else, been Rosalie, a kid, uh, been severely injured or possibly killed, a young child. Uh, I had to get down, kick at the dogs. Finally, the owner, they would not respond to the owner. Owner finally got him on the collar. And, uh, um. That doesn't go anyplace. I tell you, somebody other than myself could go back and shoot the dogs. That's when things really sour. Now we have retaliation and retaliation. And I don't, I don't want people to do that, but I tell you, we're gonna have to do something about this. So I called the police. And Officer, uh, Christensen came, good guy, uh, typical of Sunnyside Police, and he brought with him, uh, the, uh, new. Animal Control Officer, uh, Officer Goss. And she came in and acted like she was, uh. Not concerned at all. Her attitude was one of zero concern. And, uh, we chatted and they said, well, you're on film. And I said, I didn't care if it was on film. Uh, I thought maybe they might want me to sing. I do sing well. And, uh. Uh. And we got out in the parking lot. She kept interrupting me. And then she said, well, you know what I expect here to happen here? I expect these people to be cited. I expect these two dogs to be gone out of my neighborhood so that the children, my wife and other people are no longer threatened by these animals. So an hour would buy and I called the police station. So what was the termination? Well, Officer Goss determined that they were not aggressive. They were not a threat and they were not dangerous. Uh. That can't go on. That, that just absolutely, you, you talk about some things that can have disrespect for our police force that they do not deserve. That's it. Uh, regarding to what I've heard tonight regarding, uh, bookkeeping and City Hall, uh, I think. I think, uh, that, um, Britton nailed it when she said, nobody in this room believes what's being supported here. Uh, it's obvious. I've been there. I told this last time. I had a staff member that we trusted empirically. She really didn't even handle money. What I found out later is she would dossier up the books. She was taking insurance checks. And then she would come in after hours and, and flip the books. And we didn't find out till we did our own forensic audit and we really dug into these things and it took us two weeks and. Uh, back then, twenty-five, thirty years ago, whatever it was, it was forty thousand dollars, which was a hell of a lot of money then. And I was wondering why she was driving a new car and I wasn't. Uh, the forensic audit here is empirical. You don't need to read all the stuff to do it. You don't need that to vote on. You've heard enough here and enough before. To vote on this tonight. And I think the people here that have. Put you in office really want to see that. That's being a service to the community. Hey. If nothing happens, uh, fantastic. Everybody's exonerated. There's no questions. It's, this is to clear everybody's name. And that's exactly what should be done. There's too many questions here, too much evidence, uh. And, uh, to, um. Take the books away from a department and, uh, not have them oversight that. I mean, I, I don't even imagine it. Uh, uh, there's, nobody's watching the store. Thanks for listening. I respect you all. Thanks to you all for your time that you spend here. You too.
Thank you, sir. Next name on my list is Ruby Medina.
Good evening, everybody.
Pull the microphone down, please. There you go.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me here and thank you, um, for hearing us and taking the time and trying to make our community better and safer. Um, what I'd like to talk about again is back to the animal control services. I did have an awesome and amazing meeting with city manager and brought in our city. One of our community resource partner who came all the way from Spokane. And so I'm really, you know, having high hopes. With the next planning and steps that we need to do and have, um, in order to have our shelter. And make it a better place for our community and our animals. One of the concerns I have right now is the fact that. I don't know. I feel like we're in limbo right now in regards to an animal control officer service and what we're doing. Um. There was a post last week on ten five and I have, I'm, I have originals, but I haven't made copies, but I will make copies. And, uh, a lady who resides in Sunnyside said, I do not understand how dumping, abandoning, throwing away, neglecting a kitten, puppy, elderly dog or cat is allowed in Sunnyside, Washington. I'm shocked to see dogs roaming with collars and without collars all day long. Why? Where's their owner? Where's the responsibility? I witnessed three small dogs attack a small fluffy white dog the other day. I witnessed a driver slamming on his brakes, avoiding hitting a dog and almost causing the driver behind him to rear end him. This is not good. With freezing temperatures soon and these four babies must be kept inside, there needs to be law. If you abandon your dog. Off along the road or tie them up to die, then you should go to jail. It's inhumane. Well, then. This is the confusion and this is where I'm in limbo. Megan Goss, who is the acting animal control officer. As I, as we've been told or as I've been told, um, posted a post saying people are spreading rumors that we don't have an ACO quote unquote. Parentheses, which we do. The shelters are full and cannot take any more strays. A lot of rescues are struggling to get fosters and because people are saying we don't have an ACO. People are not reporting to the police department to animal control in regards to these things. So an investigation can be done. The change hasn't happened yet. Sunnyside still has an animal control. They are just limited on what they can do due to spaces. The problem is turning to social media before, before turning to the authorities and vigilantes pretending they have authority. Another gentleman filed a comment in rebuttal to her report saying he filed a bite report. With the city of Sunnyside when his son was bit by the dog in, in their neighborhood. And he actually talked to her and spoke to her and she did nothing. My other concern is that I did not hear, you know, from, uh, Mr. Stevens in regards to his experience with the animal control officer and. When you take that position and you represent animal control officers and you're working with civil, um. One is that what is your stance with the community? Are you treating the community members fair? Are you being professional? Second, I have called dispatch myself and I was told we don't have an animal control officer, but we have somebody who's saying that we do. Then we have, you know, dispatch saying that we don't. Um, I was called, uh, last week from a, a lady who lives on the three hundred block on North Sixteenth Avenue. In regards to picking up a dog. She said she called animal control officer throughout the whole week. And the way she remedialled the situation was called her over the phone and said, sorry, unless the dog's aggressive, we can't go out there. So my big concern is that, one, taxpayers' dollars. Where's this, where's the funding coming from, right? In regards to what she's claiming through the Facebook post, and I'm happy to share that with you guys. And if we are using our taxpayers' dollars, what is it being used for? Because there's more than, than what animal control officer can do than just pick up animals. They can actually investigate. They can actually follow up, meet people at their homes, scan the dog for a chip, look for their owners and give citations. But that's clearly not being happening and that's not being done. Yeah, I just picked up seven dogs from our own city, housed them in my own home and got them to a rescue within two days. There are things that can be done and it's not happening. I'm afraid with this person. Because I know that the position is being open and I know that everybody has the opportunity to apply, but my concern is that if she has a take like this. In regard to the community she serves, is our, is, is the community gonna get the best quality service? So that's my concern and that's what I wanted to bring to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, that's the last name on my list. Um, in regards to the dog question, um, I know council received the news that the Humane Society was no longer going to provide animal control services after a certain date. As soon as council heard about that with very little debate, we approved a new position of animal control officer. We approved the budget. Um, and honestly anticipated being able to fill that position by October the first. Obviously, that hasn't happened. Um, it is a struggle to get people to apply for certain jobs. I know with Ms. Medina's help, we have contacts with, um, different agencies that are able to provide kennels. Uh, to short-term house these animals and also places to take them. And so I appreciate your help on that. You've worked a great deal with the city manager and we're kind of excited about seeing some results from that. Um, what we're not seeing is applicants for this particular job. Um, the person going around saying she is the animal control officer is not an employee of the city. She is an employee of the Humane Society and they are not taking animals unless they are aggressive and dangerous or very sick. So a random animal roaming around the streets, nobody knows where it's from, they're not taking them anywhere at all. So this is not a Sunnyside problem. This is a problem countywide. And I know Mr. Ristucci, when he talks about the mayor's meeting coming up, he's gonna mention that, uh, how we have started. Si- countywide with all the cities and trying to get the county involved to help solve this problem. But you are one hundred percent correct that we have a serious animal problem in Sunnyside. There is no doubt in anyone's mind, including everyone sitting up here. It is a problem. And Dr. Stevens, I feel bad that these dogs were aggressive towards you. I'm glad you weren't bit or injured in any other way. Um, but. Thank you. I, I understand, sir, but you weren't having to take to the hospital for that. I'm grateful, but. I understand, sir. Thank you. So. We are trying to resolve this. And it is taking far more time than we want. All right. I believe Mr. Ristucci, our deputy mayor, wanted to have some time to comment on some of these things. And so, Mr. Ristucci, I'm gonna give the floor to you briefly in the area of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate all the comments that were made at last meeting, um, or not the, not the workshop, but the regular meeting and tonight's meeting. Um, it's important that we look at the finances of our city. However, I do not support a forensic audit, ladies and gentlemen, and here's why. This is the nineteenth budget that I have sat through in the, on this city council. This is the best audit we have received from the state auditor in over a decade. I attended the exit conference and the entrance conference of the last audit. And I heard laudable comments from the state auditor. Who are all licensed CPAs. Um, that our city was doing great when it came to our finances. That all of our management letters and things that previous audits had found were actually worked off. That we were golden according to the state. Now, if the citizens of this community want an audit. Then I would recommend that you petition the council. That means you put together a petition with a hundred and fifty signatures and you come before the council and you present it to us and you present your grievances that way. Because ladies and gentlemen. This council should not move. On the word of seven individuals. We represent seventeen thousand people in this community. And seven people can't come to the podium, two meetings in a row and make the council spend a hundred. And seven people can't come to the podium, two meetings in a row, and make the council spend a hundred thousand dollars on an audit. It doesn't work that way. And as for citing RCWs. It's, I love the law, ladies and gentlemen, and I read it constantly, and I've written tons of Sunnyside municipal code. So I can tell you, I know what I'm talking about, and we have our attorney there, so he can question, he can check me if I'm wrong. On the issue of bringing up the RCW forty-two, forty, zero, four, zero, inappropriate government action. Unfortunately, this statute pertains to the State Employment Whistleblower Protection Act and has nothing to do with city business. On the issue of bringing up fifty dot zero, four, one, eight, zero. This, this deals with the State Employ- Employment Security Act and again does not pertain to city business. If citizens are concerned that the city of Sunnyside is operating incorrectly. I recommend that they look at Title thirty-five RCW, thirty-five A thirteen, thirty-five A twelve. And thirty-five eleven, which does have some powers of the cities. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm an advanced, I have an advanced certificate of municipal leadership. I have over a hundred twenty hours of training when it comes to understanding. How council manager, strong mayor, and commission forms of government work in this state. This is not how we get an audit done. If you want an audit, show us, show the council that you want an audit. That's all I had to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We can't have people breaking out, threatening anybody on this council.
I was just about to say something, Mr. Beeler. Thank you for that. Mr. Knowles, I'm gonna have to ask you to refrain from speaking. Threatening people is completely out of line. If I hear you do that again, I will ask you to have you removed from this room.
And Mr. Knowles, you should be advised that making a threatening statement to an elected official is a felony in this state.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ristucci. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Ristucci, he does have a great deal of knowledge on these subjects and what he says is true. Um I do want to address a couple of things that have been said in the last couple of weeks. I'm not gonna comment on anything that would said. That was said this evening because I have not had time to read the paperwork handed to us or to do any research on any of that. I started investigating some of the stuff that you saw, and I have to start from a certain perspective. Number one, and this shows up in our budget manual every year, department functions. The city council, well, obviously, we're elected by the voters. We set city policy and law. We budget, we have budget and expenditure authority, and we authorize city staffing levels. Okay, that's what we do. The city manager administers policy, carries city contracting authority, and hires and manages staff. The council does not hire staff. That's the city manager's job. If there's a problem with the city employee, you have to speak with the city manager. Council can do nothing about this, okay? Unless there's proof of illegal activity. We may be able to step in, but this is the, this is the manager's priority. We talk about firing people and people who have been let go, the authority of the city manager, and this comes from the city. Uh personnel policies handbook. Every employee has access to this. Talks about authority of the city manager. The city manager as appointing authority ha- has general control and supervision over the affairs of the city. All right, city manager has sole authority to remove at-will employees. Council does not have authority to remove at-will employees or anybody else. Okay, it's the manager's job. And every single department head is an at-will employee. A civil employee includes police officers, firefighters. It does not include the administration. I have this from HR, I have this from other sources. If you believe otherwise, you have been incorrectly informed, and I'm sorry about that. If you have comments about that afterwards, please see us later. It is the city manager's prerogative to decide if somebody needs to stay or needs to go. Technically, as I understand it, she doesn't even have to conduct an investigation, that she was kind enough to do so. All right, to justify what she did. She does inform council of what she's going to do, but she doesn't have to ask for permission. Okay, other areas that have, that I've looked at are budget questions. All the public comments have been ma- made available to our auditors. The state auditors, federal auditors, anybody who's looking at our books, those comments have been made available to them. And we've asked them to study them. We've requested special attention to areas of public concern. There is a federal and state audit that is happening through the month of November. So it's occurring, it's occurring now, the federal audit. I believe, as I understood it this afternoon, deals with how we're handling our grants. And the state audit is covering the rest of the budget. We will have those results sometime in December. Maybe in January. I'm not sure how long it takes for them to compile all that information. All right, once we see those results, we can determine what the next steps need to be. All right, and I do want to say that we're talking about a missing million dollars. I can tell you that these auditors find three hundred dollars in discrepancies. Okay, I don't know if you've ever been audited by the IRS. But they love to have findings against you. They will find something. They are determined. And any auditor that's going to look at a budget and not be able to find three million dollars that has been misplaced. Does not deserve the job of auditor. That auditor deserves to be in the unemployment line. Believe me, these people take their jobs seriously. Okay, so we are waiting to see what the state has to say. Another thing is, and this was not necessarily reported at a public meeting, but I have been told. That we have five members of staff who have allegedly seen. Evidence of double books, apparently a laptop. They've seen that, they've read what's on this laptop and it signs of a double set of books. There are safeguards in place to keep those kinds of things from happening. I learned that the manager cannot transfer money. The manager cannot do anything in the budget. She can't write checks. She can't do any of that. The only people who are allowed to do that are the people who the state declares have the authority to do that. There are safeguards in place in the software. Everybody who gets into the software has to log in with their own code, but not only that, every transaction that they make within that code is tagged. That helps the auditors. So let's say, for exens- example, somebody decides, I know your, your, your pass key, so I'm gonna use yours. Then the auditor looks at it and says, why did that transaction happen at this computer? It doesn't belong there. Why is this person messing around in this account? That person doesn't belong there. The auditors can track every single transaction down to the second. So any time of day or night, it is tagged with the hour and the second that that transaction happened. So that gives the auditor a path to follow to find where there's any discrepancies, any bad things that are happening. Okay, and there's very limited staff access to the finance, to the budget. So if anything does happen, it's within just a few people, and it doesn't take long to figure out who it is. Okay, we have encouraged the auditors to dig and to find whatever they can find. All right. I am very concerned that five staff members apparently have evidence of a crime. And have chosen not to report it to authorities. They have reported it instead to a group of citizens, and the citizen's recourse is to do what you have been doing. But they have not reported to authorities. In the policy manual. They have pages forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty and fifty-one. Has a list of agencies, state and federal agencies, as well as the agencies within the city and the county. Where these people can turn to and report these crimes. The city has a very clear order in this manual. For, for being a whistleblower, protections. But if they don't feel confident speaking with the city manager. The state auditor's office is right there with all the pertinent contact information. Why have they not called the authorities? They would be anonymous. Why have they chosen to go to a group of citizens? I'm extremely concerned about that. It really bothers me. There is a pathway for them to take that, and they have not used it. The state auditor could call for a forensic audit very easily and would have if there was evidence of any kind of a crime. Why has that flash drive not gone to them? You have a recourse. You have a way to do this. Mr. Ristucci has given you one idea. The other is talk to the state auditor yourself and bring this evidence to them. We want this solved. Please remember, everybody on council lives in Sunnyside. Everything that happens in Sunnyside reflects on us more than you, actually. We don't want crimes to go on. We want this solved. So that's what I have to say on that. I have not dug a whole lot deeper, other than the fact that I can tell you that um some of the allegations that have been ra- have been raised against Ms. Horner. Are um untrue. She did not leave, or she was not dismissed from a previous job. She, she filed a, uh, an appropriate job application. She went through the steps. She did it correctly. Okay? And that's as far as I dare deep, where it's none of my, as far as I dare dig, where it's none of my business. Okay, this is the manager's role. I'm not gonna go any deeper than that. All right, I am happy to talk to anyone afterwards. If you have any comments, and I don't know if the other council members have been digging and looking and trying to figure things out and wish to make some comments on this as well. I will certainly open the floor.
I was going to do it later, but I'll guess I'll do it now. I myself would like to see a forensic audit. But with the following parameters. I, I think we need to have a group of council members, a group of staff. And a group of citizens come together, sit down, and let's flush this out. And if something's flushed out that needs to be looked at through a forensic, forensic audit, then we will do it. But I, 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 I think there's a lot of he said, she said here. Uh, a- and, 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 and there's been some very good points brought up. Both sides. So I, I, I would like to see some kind of a council committee with staff and with. Community members, sit down, flush this thing out, talk about what we're concerned about or what they're concerned about. And, and, and then make the decision from there.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we're going to continue on with the rest of the agenda at this time. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and your concern. And again, you are doing nothing wrong by investigating and following through and asking these questions. Okay, this is your right and your responsibility, so there is no harm in asking questions. All right, next item is the consent agenda. Payroll vouchers. Approved payroll vouchers numbers one, one, nine, three, eight, nine through one, one, nine, three, nine, three. And wire transfers as listed for five hundred twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents for the period ending September twenty-five, twenty, twenty-three. Claim vouchers. Approved claim vouchers number one, zero, seven, four, six, seven through one, zero, seven, five, three, four. And wire transfers as listed for seven, four, seven, for seven hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred forty dollars and twelve cents for the period ending on September twenty, twenty, twenty-three. Approved claim voucher numbers one, zero, seven, five, three, five through one, zero, seven, five, seven, six. And wire transfers as listed for six hundred eleven thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents for the period ending September twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-three. Council members, any item that you wish to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Beeler, second by Counselor Hicks, to approve the consent agenda as presented as their debate on this item. Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Active agenda, lodging tax advisory committees twenty twenty-four funding recommendations. Consider approving a resolution to award the twenty twenty-four lodging tax funds in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to. The following, Sunnyside Rotary, A and A Promotions, Miss Sunnyside Committee, American Legion Post seventy-three. Sort for the Cause, five oh nine Insanity Sports Program, and Yakima Valley Tourism. The award, award amount will be incorporated into the twenty twenty-four budget. Mr. Farmer, did you want to give a report on that?
Well, we were finally able to have a meeting. Um, there was a lot of discussion. There are a lot of good projects, a lot of, a lot of. Eh, every, every, every one of these people. Uh, I, I think were justified in asking for money because they do promote tourism in Sunnyside. I was um a little concerned with the award for Yakima Valley Tourism. I think we are probably a little bit underserved for the amount of money we spend. Uh, with their, with their company, uh, but it was the recommendation. Of the LTAC committee to fund what the mayor has just went through. So it's up to the council now whether they want to modify it or take it as presented.
Council members, any questions for Mr. Farmer?
I would like to modify the tourism and uh. You know, when the Miss Sunnyside was given such a low amount. I didn't think that was right.
You know, there was kind of all, only so much money, and I thought. I thought the word for Miss Sunnyside was a little bit on the low side. Personally, myself, I would, I would rather cut some more money off of uh. Valley Tourism and, and, and fund uh Miss Sunnyside. Uh, along the same lines, maybe the council needs to set up a fund for the float and for Miss Sunnyside. And keep it out of the tourism fund. I, I don't know if that's legally possible. But I, I think that that's something that maybe we might want to consider. But I, I, th- these girls work hard and their parents work harder yet. Yeah, and, and they represent our city well. They represent our city all over the state. And, and I, I, I would agree with my council member that. The award was kind of low, but there was only so much money.
I went to the LTAC meeting and, and it was hard to, I had no say in it, but it was hard to decide. Who was going to get what? And uh. It's a hard job. But. Somebody's gotta do it.
Well, I've been involved with the LTAC for over ten years. Um, and I know that the people that volunteer, they come up to the mayor, they ask, can I be on the LTAC and he appoints them. And there's a protocol on how many people are on that committee and what they do. We have strict rules that we have to follow, and they battled this out and come out with things that we don't even know about. And it's, it's, they don't take it lightly. They take it wholeheartedly. And I think we have a really good crew out there right now, and they battled this out. They've all talked about it. And I would have to go with their recommendation because we don't know everything, where they're down. Talking to everybody and going over all the forms, so. I believe that if we had volunteers asked to do something. And we let them do it, and they bring us what they think is the best way to spend the money. I think we need to back them up too. If there's a problem, of course, bring it up. I don't see a problem here. I see not everybody gets what they want. If you look, nobody got what they want. Everybody needs a little more, but there's only so much money and they balance everything, and that's just my thoughts on this LTAC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further comments?
From hearing that the float needs repairs and stuff, too is awful low in my eyes. I completely, like I said, I'm not sure what you could trim or from where or how.
Right, I think, I, I remember a few years ago, we had a discussion about um certain activities that were going to be funded. Uh, we had talked about that they were important enough to the city that they needed to be funded every year, no matter what, and the Miss Sunnyside Corp was on that list. That they would always be funded, but I don't remember that we ever set an, on a monetary amount on that. It was just always gonna receive some funding. It is, I believe, and please tell me if I'm wrong, that council does have the ability to set an amount for certain. Events that will always be funded.
We can put a line item in our budget that is for the benefit of Miss Sunnyside Court. That is totally allowed.
We are allowed to do that. Okay, so that is something that we need to talk about. We do have. Um, budget meetings coming up, and we can definitely look into how that would be done. I see Ms. Horner writing furiously.
If, if it can be done, I, I would, a- and I don't want to go against. My fellow uh LTAC committee members, but I would like to, to uh. Fund Miss Sunnyside a little bit stronger, and if we had to take the money from someplace, I would take it from the Lower Valley Tourism Fund. So that's just my opinion.
So one of the options we have, Mr. Farmer and council, is to um send this back to the LTAC for change. And ask them to change it. We do have to give them forty-five days to respond. But we don't have a funded event coming up within the next forty-five days, so that urgency probably isn't quite there. So we can do that if that is a desire of council.
I don't even think we have to send it back. Uh, they, they, they make a recommendation and we either take it or modify it.
Modifying the amount um does require it to go back to them. That we don't have to, you don't have to wait for their comments in order to make that change, but you do have to allow them forty-five days to make comments. And then after that point, the council can do as they wish. And then after that point, the council can do as they wish with the amount.
So that is an option before us as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mister, just, yeah, Mister Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Um, I agree with my colleagues, um, Mister Farmer especially. Um, uh, these ladies travel around the state. They represent us well. They are ambassadors for our community. Um, and so I've, I've said before, and I know we've had these discussions in, in retreats, Mister Mayor, that I wanted to make sure there was some type of permanent funding solution for them. And it doesn't necessarily have to come from LTAC. If that's all LTAC wants to put forward, I'm okay with that as long as we find some other funding source um to make sure they're fu- fully funded.
Thank you, sir. I agree with my colleagues on this one. I also feel like the uh Miss Sunnyside Court deserves a whole lot more support from the city of Sunnyside than a two thousand dollar check from LTAC. Um, I have encountered our court and their float as far away as Afreda. Um, just happened to be there when their float was going by. I was absolutely shocked, but there they were, and they had to get that thing out there in what the time was kind of a rickety trailer. And um, Mister Dolan, I believe you were there and involved in that process that time. And um, they have made do with very little for a very long time. And um two thousand dollars is almost insulting. So.
I think we should look in the budget and try to fund them that way and keep the LTAC for them to be able to work on their vehicle because I've heard that they're having trouble with their truck. And let them have a little more this year, but find a way to fund them every year from the city.
Okay, Mister Hicks?
Uh, if possible, I'd like to see like another three thousand added to that to make it five total. I'm not saying all LTAC. If we had a way to if you have vehicle repairs, uh, just gas alone lately will kill two thousand and nothing flat.
So we constantly be willing to consider a budget item that would give them five thousand dollars and plus whatever the LTAC kicks in? Yeah, do we want to table this question until we talk about, or do we want to vote on the LTAC tonight and then work on the budget item over the next couple of weeks?
LTAC tonight and move on from there.
I agree. Very good. So further comments on this item? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on item A, lodging tax advisory committee?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion by Counselor Hicks, second by Counselor Ripley to approve the resolution to award the twenty twenty-four lodging tax funds in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to the listed agencies. Is there debate on this item? No debate? Then all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I also vote aye and motion carries. All right, and we will be looking at additional funding for them in the upcoming budget. All right, the next item is the twenty twenty-four ad valorem public hearing. Let me read the documentation that goes with that. This public hearing is being held to receive public comment concerning the amount of monies to be raised by ad valorem taxes to finance the municipal operations of the city or for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-four. Appearance of fairness disclosures. The concern is that this hearing be fair in form and substance as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, is there anyone in the audience who objects to my participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings? If there are objections, please approach the microphone, state your address, city of residence, and your objection. This public hearing is now open as of seven forty-two. Madam City Manager, you will now provide the staff report on this item?
I will actually turn it over to Ms. Horner for staff report.
Ms. Horner.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, Mister Mayor. Um, today we present the proposed ad valorem tax levy for property tax. Uh, we are restricted by state law to an, a one percent increase um of our total tax levy each year. So we're asking just for that additional one percent. So basically, however, when we pass a levy, that amount that we passed, so last year was about two point five million, we can only increase that amount for those same houses by one percent. So this year, I believe property values have gone up by some, some up as high as thirty-five percent, forty percent. Um, but we don't get to increase our entire levy by that same amount. We, we have to stick with that one percent. So effectively, the tax rate goes down um as we can't meet the uh property value increases. So we're asking for council to approve this um additional twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Any person in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter, please approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and offer your testimony. Madam, if you could approach the microphone and say what you're going to say, that would be wonderful.
If I understood what you were saying, but I think you're saying that you're going to pick up, we're going to pay more taxes, property taxes. Is that what you're trying to ta- sit, tell us? Yes, no?
Madam City Manager, will you be able to explain exactly what an ad valorem tax increase is?
It is an increase on your property tax by one percent. So on a hundred thousand dollar value, give me the number, Jamie, my brain's going blank.
So, and that's why property tax, this is why property tax is really confusing because the actual let me share my screen here. Hold on, um, is that okay, Marty?
So, uh, di- uh, uh, you know, you guys raise our taxes, but our income never goes up. Okay, so you know, you're making us poor by doing that. Uh, this is a low poverty, a community, and you guys are leeching us of money. I mean, the, my retirement stays at one level. You guys take it all.
We under- we understand what you're saying, and, and please understand, um, if you've received your property tax assessment from the county, you have seen that your assessment has gone way up. It's almost scary. I
Sixty thousand dollars.
I hesitated for five days to open that envelope because I didn't want to see it. So I totally understand. So your property taxes are going to go up no matter what we do. Please understand that, and it does have, and most of it has nothing to do with the city.
They office it, you guys, come on.
The city has two
Utility also, the, the garbage will go up, the water will go up.
Thank, thank, thank you. Let me try to explain, okay? The city has two sources of income, generally speaking. Property tax and sales tax. The state allows us to raise the property tax rate that we collect one percent over what we had last year. And Ms. Horner's got that up on the screen and she's going to attempt to explain that.
If I could see that.
Can we make that larger?
That is her nan. I have bad eyesight. I can never read that screen. The font is too small.
Go get them. All right, thank you. You may go, you may sit down. We're going to do the best we can to explain this to you.
Thank you. So last for twenty twenty-three are the amount that we levied is this amount here. Two point five two nine million dollars. So we are only allowed to increase by one percent of that. So we're allowed to increase by twenty-five thousand dollars and some change. So what we're but we also get to, we, as we do annexations or people do improvements to their property, that improves the overall value and those additional things do get charged extra. So effectively, the amount we collect is slightly more than one percent. But for each individual house or for, for all of the assessed property value, if it were to stay the same, it can only go up by one percent. But this column right here shows the assessed value increase. So over the last however many years, this is how much the assessed value has gone up. So if you go down here to twenty thirteen, um, assessed value's gone up every year since then. But our increase amount can only still be one percent. So if you look at the tax, the effective tax rate here has actually gone down over the years because we, the, the increase in property value is more than one percent. So the amount that we charge per thousand of your home actually effectively becomes a little bit less. And I know it's, it's kind of confusing.
So, so let's change this to, to numbers that everyone has to deal with. You live in a house in Sunnyside, we're going to say that the median house in Sunnyside is what, two hundred fifty thousand dollars? Okay, we've got some that are well over that and some that are under that. What is a property owner going to pay in additional taxes on that median home?
If their house value did not increase from one year to the next, they would pay slightly less.
What, can you give me a dollar amount?
So, so this rate right here, so one point nine three eight. So let me scroll down so I can do math. And you said how much?
Two hundred fifty thousand dollar house. Which sadly anymore is a one bath, two bedroom house.
Okay, so the assessment for the city for your portion of property tax on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house would be this amount, this much, four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, and the one percent increase is going to add how much to that?
So the one percent increase, well, that's for twenty twenty-four, sorry. So I, I did it for twenty twenty-four. So for twenty twenty-three, which we had the higher tax rate, it was four eighty-four. If your house didn't increase in value at all, then your tax rate actually goes down to one thirty-four, but nobody's house has really stayed the same.
No, that's correct, but what, what people are looking at, I think, is, is how much is this going to cost out of their pocket?
It really depends on how much their property value increased year over year.
But we're not looking at over a hundred and fifty dollars increase in value over the year?
No, sir. We're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars citywide, so split between potentially maybe three thousand households.
All right, so the city is only going to gain twenty-five thousand dollars off of this increase citywide. Okay, so it's not charging everybody twenty-five thousand dollars. It is a twenty-five thousand dollar increase citywide. Three thousand homes. Okay? So if you wish to speak, sir, you need to approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and make your comments. That would be Mister Knowles that's speaking.
It's Ken Knowles, and I live in Sunnyside. And you know, I, I, I just want the council and everybody to understand the average income in this town and the, the, the farm, it's a farm community. So their average income is forty-three to forty-five thousand dollars a year, the average income. And they're wanting to raise taxes and everything else. And, and I, I live here, but we're paying three, so, three levies on, on school board. So at our property. So we're paying all that and, and yet it's okay, keep raising taxes. The taxpayers can handle it. The cat, taxpayers can't handle it. It, 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 it's going to be a time when you can't keep raising taxes. You're going to have to find some other way. And I understand the city has to have money to, to operate, but they're going to have to figure out how to tighten up their belts and pull everything in and get a little bit, yeah, get some consensus to it, get something. You know, don't just keep spending, spending, spending because the taxpayers are going to keep paying. Well, the taxpayers are broke. You know, you're paying, if you have, if you have kids in school, you have to have gas, you have to have insurance, you have to have everything to do it. And yet you don't, they're robbing from Peter to pay Paul right now because everything's going, you know, you, you just got to get some, 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 you need to get it together somehow.
Thank you, sir. Mister Carnard, did you want to speak?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to do the math here. It's, we only, we only have three thousand houses in Sunnyside?
That was, sorry, I don't know actually off the top of my head. Um, I think, how many utility accounts do we have approx? I, I want to say we have about forty-five hundred utility accounts. So we have more than that. I was just pulling a number out.
Okay, well, because I'm picking three thousand and twenty-five thousand, now we're talking what, eight hundred dollars? Yeah, I mean, so.
Well, no, because some houses have higher value than others.
Right, and, and that's the other point I want to make. Whose house value did not go up this last year? Yeah, nobody's.
Everybody's went up.
Everybody's went up. I mean, I almost fainted when I saw mine. So, um, I, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're doing the math okay, that you guys are considering the math okay for us, okay? That's all I want to make.
All right, thank you. Further public comment? Mister Dolan, Mister Dolan?
So I teach math. Oh, Mister Dolan, uh, Sunnyside. Are we going by that what the county just assessed our properties at? Is that what we're?
What?
You want to go ahead and answer, Ms. Horner?
He, the, the assessment that you received for twenty twenty-four should have your updated twenty twenty-four property value assessment.
And that's what you go by for?
Well, so they give us that total number. We don't know the individual properties. So for twenty twenty-four, yeah, they gave us this one point four billion in total assessed property value for properties currently within city limits of Sunnyside.
Yeah, the point four is mine. Holy moly.
Right, thank you, sir.
I about fainted too, and, and that's what my question was because this is going to hurt.
Correct. And that's why we have this public hearings, because we want to get your feedback on this. And um believe me, we all live in Sunnyside, as I've previously mentioned. Um, we feel it too. So this is a painful discussion for us as well.
So we should be going up to the county to ask them about?
It won't do any good. All right.
Good try.
Other comments?
I'm sort of confused.
Can you pull the microphone down so we can hear you?
Sort of clench, confused because different numbers were expressed or Jamison said different numbers, but my concern is for the citizens of our community that our property owners whose property taxes went up. And you know, we have medium, mostly medium to low income people and even though it's twenty-five thousand dollars or whatever number you said, some people won't be able to afford that with the increase in the taxes from the county. That's the only thing I, you know, all the numbers I don't understand, but because there's two million, I can't really see it, but then she said something about one something billion. Well, that's quite a difference in, I don't know what she said, but there was two numbers and that's a lot of space in those numbers. And so, you know, is it, I don't know. I just think with, with the economy, the way it is right now, maybe taxes shouldn't go up for a year or two.
Thank you. Further comments? Okay, so we're trying to help you understand this and we're trying to understand all of this ourselves. Um, the total amount of gain that the city would make from increasing this taxes one percent is in the neighborhood of twenty-five thousand dollars. The number the city operates on, we don't know the value of anybody's house. What we do know is the value of total property in Sunnyside. So that's what we're basing that on. All right. So now council members, I'm sorry.
Do you have her run numbers on two hundred fifty thousand dollars last year versus the one percent added on this year? What the total difference would be?
Yes, would you please do that?
That's what I've been doing right here, sorry. So we can see here, this is our one point four billion dollar total assessment for every property within Sunnyside city limits. So that's all of the houses added together. That's how much all, everybody's property is altogether. Um, that went up by eleven point two six percent over last year, which was one point three billion dollars. So if we were to increase our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house by let's just say an even twelve percent, that brings our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house to two hundred and eighty thousand. So our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house was at this price, one point nine three eight per thousand. And our, our house this year at two hundred and eighty thousand is this much, one point seven three eight seven. So this year, you would pay four hundred and eighty-six to the city, whereas last year you paid four hundred and eighty-four to the city.
So two dollars more.
So on a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house, you'd pay two dollars more than you did last year?
Correct.
Okay, if your house has gone up considerably more or you have a more valuable house, obviously the tax rate is going to go a little bit higher. Okay?
The numbers just don't add up. I mean, two, two dollars a house and we're talking two, twenty-five thousand dollars. The numbers, the numbers don't add up.
But we do have million dollar homes in town. We can't, we can't hear you if you don't speak into the microphone and it has to be on the record.
Can go down, not paint our house, uh, uh, not put new windows, uh, do the lawn better. I mean, what do you suggest so we can keep low taxes? Maybe it's up to you guys to decide on that, or maybe you can wish that I win the Lotto?
I'll buy you a ticket. So the purpose of this is for us to labor through this and it's a public hearing so that you can comment. Council members, do you have questions or comments on this matter?
Ms. Horner? Uh, what you're talking about, you're calling houses, that's business is awful. That's your Walmart's, that's your Safeway's, that's every business, every building we have, not just houses.
Correct, that's every property within city limits that has a value.
I've got two properties, and I got two of them, and they both went out.
Yeah, yes, and and it's true, the vast majority of this value is made up in commercial and in industrial. Um, the mall, the Walmart, the school district, well, they don't pay property tax, but, um, they would be a huge portion of what that is versus individual residents.
Okay, further questions from council? All right, this public hearing is now closed as of seven fifty-nine. All right. Okay, so this is not a question that we vote on this evening. Um, this is the public hearing to hear from you and to ask the questions of the finance director. And please keep in mind, if we vote in favor of this, we're also voting to raise our taxes. So this is, uh, something that is equally painful to us as it is to you if this if were to be voted on, or we would use the same reasoning that you use to vote it down. So that is the, uh, reasoning why we live in this community by law. We have to live in the city we represent, would make no sense otherwise to be on the council. All right, the next item is.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do have a comment here. Um, times are tough. I I I have voted more times against the ad valorem tax than I voted for it. Uh, I struggled this time again. My prob, my property went up almost a hundred thousand dollars. Somewhere along the line, I think the city needs to, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars isn't going to break us at all. I I think that maybe this would be a year that we could pass that savings along to the people. I think maybe we can look at, uh, our budget. Uh, and maybe we can prioritize some things and not do some things that lack of a better word, that's fluff. A- 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 and and save our, save our citizens a few bucks. I I I I'm going to have a hard time supporting this again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Farmer. And again, we're reminding you, this is not something we're voting on tonight, this coming up at our next regular meeting. Um, and certainly open for discussion, and I'm sure there will be discussion on this one. So. All right, item five, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. We have one vacancy here for the Community and Economic Development Committee. If anybody would like to, uh, get an application, you can either get it online or at City Hall. And we certainly love to read that, consider that, and, uh, get that position filled. Item B, council request status report.
And there's been no changes since the last meeting to any of those items.
Okay, very good. If there's any item counselors that you would like added to the status report, you can either tell us at this time or speak to the manager or myself to get that added.
I I would, I would like a report. There's been some chatter on Facebook about the water tower. Are we going to, are we going to get a logo painted on it this year or not?
So we've actually looked into getting a decal, which is less expensive. Um, Rob had an emergency the day we were supposed to fly the drone up to the tank, and so we weren't able to do that, but we do need to get that rescheduled, so we're going to do our best.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so would you like that added to the report?
No, I will, I'm waiting. I mean, we're working on it, just as long as, just as long I know we're working on it, we're, uh, I I'm good with it.
Okay. Very good. Item C, other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. Deputy Mayor Restucci, I'm going to let you go first tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Um, as the mayor alluded to earlier, I did attend the mayor's meeting, uh, recently, and I spoke with not a majority of the mayors. Unfortunately, we didn't have all the mayors there. We had about, uh, six mayors there. Um, but all of them lower valley mayors, um, Yakima wasn't there. Uh, Union Gap was there, though, um, and so we were informed that all of the cities in Yakima Valley, with the exception of Union Gap and Yakima, have had their contracts terminated with animal, uh, with the Humane Society. Um, Yakima and the Union Gap will, uh, has been extended up until mid-year next year. Um, but they're the only ones that have got the contract with animal controls or with the Humane Society still for animal control. The rest of the cities in the valley are actually looking to us, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I mentioned that we were going to hire an animal control officer. Um, and that we had a makeshift kennel for dogs over at the police station, but it was only, you know, four stalls, and it wasn't going to be something we're going to be able to use, uh, very much. And so, um, the mayor of Tappanish said that she might be, there might be an opportunity for us to look at a shelter there. And so I've asked YV cog to look into this. Chris Wickenhagen, our executive director at YV cog, is looking into this because this is not just a Sunnyside problem, as you said, Mr. Mayor, this is a county problem. And Yakima and Union Gap will be in the same boat as us early next year. So, and then I only have one other item, Mr. Mayor, and that is I hope to see all of you at the, uh, YV cog general membership meeting coming up Wednesday, October eighteenth at the Sunnyside Community Center. Great opportunity for us to get together and for you to meet with mayors and council members from around the valley. So I hope to see you all there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and that is a fun event, council members. It's, uh, worth going to. Mr. Farmer?
Uh, I think I said enough tonight.
Okay, Ms. Ripley?
I'm wondering who, uh, cleans up Sunnyside Avenue. That's my way home every day, and there's been a, a car part on the sidewalk there for months. And, uh, it's, there's a lot of garbage along that, it's that one that goes down the hill.
Police chief? Can I task you with, uh, finding out about that vehicle?
Yeah, Sunnyside Avenue, where it drops down the hill right there, okay?
You saying there's a car parked or a car parked?
A car part, like the undercarriage of a.
I thought it was a car parked. So actually, that would be Public Works Director Sanchez. Let's pass the buck to everybody.
This is a piece of a car, it's a piece of a car.
Right.
It's like a muffler or something.
Under well of a, uh, where the tire is and stuff. And there's all kinds of garbage there. I mean, do the people pick up their own garbage?
Well, one of the things that we do have is we have a street sweeper, and in most streets we can go along, that's street sweeper won't go down that road, because normally that's how a lot of the garbage gets picked up around town.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hicks?
I've been noticing a lot more graffiti everywhere again, if we can get code enforcement to start spraying over some of it again.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I know sixteen years ago, when I was in code enforcement, we didn't allow anybody putting any kind of signs or billboards or anything on, uh, city property, telephone poles, light poles and all that. And I'm seeing somebody's putting the red ones all over the place with zip ties, advertisements, and if we let that go. I've been to big cities when the stickers on the side of the telephone poles are twice as big as they are, because everybody just puts stuff on top of them. So I think it's something we need to look at and stop before it gets out of control.
And I believe we do have an ordinance prohibiting that, so you are correct there. All right, so I had an opportunity, I think I mentioned this earlier, to meet with Ms. Medina, she's left now, unfortunately, but we had a really good conversation, and, um, she met with the city manager and brought a representative from an animal rights or an animal organization in Spokane that's willing to take animals. And, um, she's got resources and access to different things. I am trying to work with her and trying to keep her in contact with city manager, make some progress on places to keep animals. I know, um, you heard the deputy mayor's report about, uh, the city of Tappanish and some of the opportunities that they have. You know that the facilities that we have available are limited to a couple of dogs and not much more than that. But, um, I know Ms. Medina has said she's got access to kennels and things that the city could acquire free of charge, and we're looking into that, and we're trying to make some progress there. I'm kind of excited about the progress that we're able to make on that. Um, tonight's stories about the dog attacks is indicative of the problem that we have citywide. And I know it's a countywide problem. Every city in the valley has this problem, including Yakima, even with their dog control efforts. But we're focused on Sunnyside here. This is, this is where we live, so we need to make some effort on that. I have been, I'm feeling kind of good. I think the meeting with, uh, the city manager and Ms. Medina, Ms. Medina went really well. So, um, I'm looking forward to progress on that. If you know of anybody who would like to apply for the animal control officer's position, please encourage them to do so. Um, we are looking for a qualified individual. We don't want to hire somebody who is disinterested and non-helpful and refuses to respond. So I know all over the city, we're looking for that. Everybody's trying to find that, and the manager's got something to say about that as well, so.
And actually, applications have closed, and we have three people that we are scheduling interviews with. Ms. Horner, if you want to elaborate.
I didn't ask the right questions this morning, so.
I believe those interviews are scheduled for the seventeenth of this month, so the recruitment pro- process did take a little longer than we expected. Um, but we do hope to have somebody in place and working by November one.
All right, so we're working on that. We do take these things seriously. Some days it may not feel like it, but yes, we do. All right. Any other announcements by council? All right, our next item is upcoming council meetings, and we'll allow our clerk to help us out with that.
Okay, so October twenty-third will be a regular meeting, and we will have an action item to set property tax levies for the year twenty twenty-four. Um, city manager will present council and the public with the twenty twenty-four budget message. And we'll also get the LTAC funding recommendations for November sixth, the workshop. We'll have police and fire swearing-in ceremony. And then November thirteenth, at the regular meeting, we'll have our first public hearing for the twenty twenty-four budget, and then also for the twenty twenty-four official newspaper.
Thank you. Any council member have anything that needs to be added to the budget? Please see me or the manager as soon as possible. We'll get that on the upcoming meetings. I think I said budget, I meant meeting. Been a long day already. All right, items from department heads, and as I begin this, I do want to apologize to the manager and to Ms. Horner, because they wanted to have an opportunity to, uh, explain the situation from their point of view, and I failed to give them that opportunity, so please, I apologize. Um, you have the opportunity to speak in that area as well. So, Madam City Manager?
So I've sat through some really hard meetings in my life. Twenty-three years working for cities. I've worked in Prosser, Grandview, Tappanish, and for the city of Sunnyside for nine years. I have taken my job very seriously. I've never taken any money, never hidden any money. I was very, very insulted to be held at that level in a public meeting. I have an open door policy. Anyone can come to my office. Anyone can let me log into the computer and log into our system, and just as I showed the mayor, we have an audit trail that even the software engineers cannot tamper with. And that's how we have found that when I started here in twenty fourteen, we did have someone that was falsifying. We did have someone that had the power to go in and void transactions. When this all came out, I immediately put things in place so that people do not have the same shared access, do not have uh, the ability to get into someone else's login in their computer. We take that very seriously. And even though I'm not in the finance department anymore, I uphold that our records are safe. The money is there. And I know I said I would agree to a forensic audit. Two days later, we had an executive session, and I was advised by the city attorney, do not do that. And so I took his advice. I do want you to know I live in Sunnyside. I've been here since I was a kid. And I take my job very, very seriously. And I hold my staff accountable. And when people aren't doing a good job, I hold them accountable. And yes, people have left for, for different reasons. Some of them have been because we had Shane, the Public Works Director, now is the city administrator in Grandview. And that is an amazing thing for both of our cities. Because now Shane knows what Sunnyside has. And I know what Grandview has, because I worked there for ten years. And we can have mutual benefits between the two cities. Because honestly, I can't pay for a full-time animal control officer. Probably going to need to work that in eventually. Grandview has stepped up to the plate and said, how do we help solve this? Both our cities are in need. And it's by forming those relationships and doing the things that is going to benefit Sunnyside that I know we will come out ahead. And so I just want to say it's really hard to sit and hear comments and people trying to just basically get me fired. And I would not want someone else's reputation to be put in that same light. So I open the door to any of you to come to my office, make an appointment, and come look at the audit trail. Come look at how our books work. Because there's nothing missing. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Horner.
Thank you. Um, I want to address a couple of the things that were brought up in studies or in the public comments tonight, because I do know the answers. Um, we have heard multiple times about unauthorized raises. There have been no unauthorized raises for city staff. The salary and compensation schedule is passed by council, and those are the salary amounts that is authorized by council to be paid to staff. At the beginning of twenty twenty-three, we had an adjustment to the non-rep staff salaries, and a lot of that was in result of the compensation study process that we had begun back in twenty twenty-two, where we'd given multiple presentations on salary compression um, at the top of our scale, where our union employees had had contract after contract that had had negotiated increases, and the leadership level staff had not received the same increases, and so we had police sergeants that were making more money than the police chief. And so when we go to try to fill open positions of police commander or fire chief or police chief, and we can't find somebody who wants to take on the responsibility because it doesn't pay enough, that is a problem for us. So we took the long look on this, and we started making those adjustments. We had that first meeting, um, I believe at the February study session in twenty twenty-two. We had another meeting about it in the March study session of twenty twenty-two. We've negotiated, I think, three union contracts since then where we've looked at parity, and we have been trying to make these adjustments because the longevity of Sunnyside depends on the ability for Sunnyside to maintain qualified staff. And we cannot do that if we do not have the appropriate amount budgeted to pay staff people for leadership positions as they open up if we can't entice somebody to take it. Um, another issue that was brought up today was the enterprise funds. Yes, we have multiple enterprise funds. They are strictly accounted for in their own funds. That money is not intermingled fund-wise and accounting-wise with any other money of the city. Those fund balances, like I said, are there at the end of the year. They're the exact same dollars and cents that are there at the end of the year are there at the beginning of the following year. Whether or not a transaction has taken place in the computer doesn't mean that there's any money in a different place in our bank or in our investment account or anywhere else. And I have the official records for the city, and Elizabeth has access to them, and as a matter of fact, every department director has access to the city's system to look at their own accounting. So when it's brought up and said that there's no oversight from departments, that's simply not true. Every department director can log into the system and look at every single one of their line items every day if they want to do that. There were a, there was a second set of accounting that was happening in our police department. I don't know about our fire department, where our police chief was, was tracking his expenses on a separate Excel spreadsheet, and he was it was slowing the process. Now, this is our previous chief, not this one. It was slowing down the process for accounts payable, and we were having invoices. It was slowing down the process for accounts payable, and we were having invoices that were being paid late, and we were having interest charges assessed to them because he wasn't turning them in for us to pay until he had logged them or had his administrative assistant log them on his separate set of, of accounting spreadsheets. We don't do that anymore. Everyone has access directly to the system to see what those numbers are. And as Elizabeth said, and the mayor said, all of those, every transaction is date and timestamped. There are no transactions that can take place without being logged into the system. The audit, I don't think anyone is against having our books audited. I, the, the point of government, and one of the reasons I like working for government, is it is, it is the money for the good of the people. And the people who work in these types of jobs work here because we want the good things to happen in the community. And that's why we have open door policies. And every person who's ever gotten up here in the last few weeks and said something negative about me or my background or my accounting, not one of those people has ever come to meet with me or asked for a copy of a record. In fact, what they have done instead is stand at the podium and quote things from a disgruntled ex-employee who was dismissed from service with the city after a long investigation done by an independent outside party that had no contact with us about the investigation. That individual now probably is a little angry with me because I'm in charge of HR and with Elizabeth, because she's, was his boss. But the fact that he is out there providing little bits of information to people doesn't mean that what he is providing to you is correct or true. As a matter of fact, as I said, the, the direct resource for all of those numbers is in the city's system, and any one of these people can come and look at the system anytime they would like to. I've offered it time and again, very few people have taken me up on it. I had George Galvano in my office today that looked at it. As, as you guys sat here in a live meeting, I pulled up a spreadsheet and I did calculations on property tax, I am an open book. I have nothing, absolutely nothing to hide, and I relish the opportunity for somebody to come and look through any of those transactions and find an inappropriate transaction. I am fine with an audit, simply because I absolutely know a hundred percent that the city has not misappropriated or mishandled any money, and I would like for this issue to go away. Because whether or not I have a college degree, I have ten years of experience in municipal accounting. I have researched RCWs for hours, I have spent so much time on MRSC, looking up issues. I have taken a plethora of trainings. I have worked with professionals from across the entire state because I was a board member on the Washington Public Treasurers Association for years. Whether or not I have a certificate that says so, I am an expert, and I am a professional in my field. And I am happy to answer any questions that anybody has. Unfortunately, as somebody said to me after the last meeting, they didn't want to ask me the questions because they didn't want my answers. Well, that's unfortunate. I can only give you the truthful answers, which is what is in the accounting system, and that's the only answer I will ever give you. But if you want a different answer that's going to say that we misappropriated or mishandled money, no, we did not, we have not. I would not work for someone who ever asked me to do that. I would hope that if anybody ever really did have a credible reason to expect that I had, that they would immediately investigate me. Absolutely, that's part of my job, and I'm very familiar with the RCWs that say as a city treasurer that I go to jail and pay big fines if I do my job wrong. I'm insulted by the comments of the public, but at the same time, I understand that they're not experts. But I am here to continue doing my job, and I appreciate the council having the faith in us to continue doing that to this point. And I hope that in the two years that I've been here, that none, no one has brought anything to my attention that they feel that I have done that was not well researched or well presented. So, like I said, I'm an open book, but I wouldn't allow people to accuse any one of my staff people of some of the things that people are accusing me of without defending them. And I'm not going to sit here and allow people to accuse me of those same things either, because I have done nothing wrong. Elizabeth has done nothing wrong. We have a previous employee who is disgruntled, and he is telling people all sorts of things. But he is a previous employee who does not work here anymore. He has no access to the true information of what actually is going on within the city. If he wanted to come and meet with me and have me look at the books, even with him, I would do that. I would absolutely do that, but he hasn't come. And neither have any of the individuals that have come up here to continue to, to talk about it. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Who do you want to go to next?
So I'm gonna now ask Chief Lehman to report for the police department.
So my wonderful crime analyst that pulls all the stats for me, he's been out for two weeks with the unexpected surgery, so I don't have any stats for you tonight, so I apologize, thank you.
Sure.
Public Works Director Sanchez?
Thank you. I don't have a lot to update either, other than on Sixth Street. I just wanted to let you know that we are waiting for the railroad flaggers to get scheduled for that project. I know I talk about this every other week, but I'm hoping one of these days I'm gonna come up here and say we're gonna start now. So that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Riley?
And again, my, my, my role here at these meetings is not to propose policy for anyone here, but to tell you what legally you can do it or not, when you propose it yourself. So I just want to clarify one thing real quick about forensic audits, so we can be all on the same page legally about what you're allowed to do. A forensic audit, by legal definition, has to be completely impartial. What that means is the city can have no involvement in a forensic audit of itself. Therefore, under the law, you cannot propose a forensic audit of yourself. You can't be involved in the firm that conducts it, you can't go hire the firm that does it, you can't have the accountants hired by the city to do it. It has to be independently done by a third party of yourselves, that's the definition of a forensic audit. So, as, as legal advisor for the city, what I'm telling you is, there is not a legal ability for the city of Sunnyside to do a forensic audit of itself. Other parties can't, if they choose to do so, but they have to be independent of the city to do so. And to, to try to do otherwise, incur liability for the city, because it wouldn't be impartial, and it couldn't be technically a forensic audit at that point. So, that's the legal aspect of all of that.
Thank you, sir.
And Deputy Clerk?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, council, for letting Jamison and I have our voice tonight. We've been through some pretty rough weeks. I had to keep my hands together so I wouldn't shake, because this is taking a toll on my health. And again, thank you, council, for letting us be heard.
Thank you. And just one final comment, let's remember that we are dealing with people. These are not inanimate objects that we are talking about, these are real individual human beings. And attacking them is very hard on them, and it is unfair. I have asked for evidence, I myself have received in my hands precious little to go over up to this point. I've had one person say, I have something for you, and then later come back to me and say, I've been advised not to give it to you. At that point, I don't know where to start, I don't know what to look at, I've received some that I don't have any context with, and I've received some that comes from other cities. So I'm not quite sure where to, where to work on that, which is why I have our personnel manual, which is why I've looked at that, I've spent time looking at the RCW. But let's try to stop with the cruelty. Making comments about people's health in other areas is completely inappropriate. Absolutely investigate, if we need to do some work on fixing some things, we will absolutely do that. We will take that seriously. But we are all people here, and we all live in this town. And if there's no other items on this agenda, which mine says there's not, without objection, we are adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
Good night, sir.